Brian.
Good evening, everyone. As a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the meeting are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chairperson, Mrs. Carol Ashambo?
Yes.
Vice chairperson, Mr. Brian Leighton.
Yes.
Secretary, Ms. Laura Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Sophie Shapiro.
Yes.
And Mr. Seamus Kelly. And Mr. Kelly is not with us, right? Are we anticipating that he will be joining the meeting?
I did anticipate that he would be here.
Okay. We also have with us this evening a student representative, Dylan Piknarsik. Hey, Dylan. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Susan Summers.
Yes.
Business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy.
Yes.
Social studies K-8 coordinator, Ms. Lisa LaBank. And maybe Lisa hasn't joined us yet. I think she's still at the awards, the senior award ceremony this evening. And Mrs. Tammy Perry. And I anticipate that she'll be joining us as well. This evening, we will be honoring retirees. Not all of them will be able to join us. But on this meeting, you might see Sherri Borison with 26 years with the Lunenburg Public Schools, Tammy Perry, also with 26 years with the Lunenburg Public Schools, Vicky Barbier, 25 years, Cheryl Nelson, also 25 years, Mr. John Londa with 23 years, Laurie Zaris with 22 years, Sue Cavioli with 21 years, Linda Colette, also with 21 years, and Tina Staylor, who has 19 years with the Lunenburg Public Schools. So you may see those, um, those names on, on this meeting tonight, and they're with us as the retirees that we're honoring this evening. I'll turn it back to you, Mrs. Ashambo.
All right. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and streaming on Facebook Live. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, accessed through the town manager's webpage, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburgs... For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, et cetera, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. Permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate business meeting minutes. I, Carol Ashambo, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, members may provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage and call a quie with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak, identify their names and addresses only. You will be given three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So with that put aside, our first agenda item is the chair's report. And I do have one this evening. The Lunenburg Public Schools were well represented at the Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday. I'd like to thank Mr. Jeffries and the organizing committee, Mrs. Wardwell and her students, John Nelson, Alondra Corello, and Michael Wen, who added their talents to the program, and the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts who participated in a very meaningful Memorial Day Ceremony. I'd like to also formally congratulate Dr. Burnham on her commitment to lead our district for the next five years. We do appreciate your leadership. And finally, I'd like to end with this news item from Town Hall. Beginning on June 15th, all public meetings in Lunenburg will be held in person. I'm happy to announce that our June 16th meeting will take place at the middle high school in the middle school multipurpose room. This will be noted on our next agenda. So, um, following along with our agenda, I'll now take a motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations. We will return to public session immediately following the executive session. Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly, and I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session at 7:10 p.m.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Ready for... Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And I'm just setting up the, um, the breakout room. All right, we should be all set. Sorry, everybody. I can't find myself to tag into the breakout room, so I'll have to try to start this again.
I think, um, you don't add yourself, but once the breakout rooms are open, if you press the breakout room button, you can join a breakout room. If that makes sense, like you can't add yourself.
Right.
Well, seeing as it looks like we have all returned, then we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is retiree recognition. Dr. Burnham?
You may recall that last year, we actually created a video to honor the retirees. And it was so well received by not only the retirees, but the school committee at the time, that we have done the same this evening. I will offer some additional information regarding our retirees. Ms. Cheryl Nelson, in terms of plans for her retirement, includes spending more time with the family, visiting loved ones far and near, visiting the mountains, the beach, hiking, kayaking, more hiking, and gardening. Mrs. Perry is really looking forward to spending more time at her camp in Maine, doing some traveling, and she's hoping to become a grandmother and enjoy that time. And I think we all send those well wishes for her in that regard. Ms. Linda Colette is planning to help care for her parents along with her brother and family. She's also hoping to get some more golf time and maybe hit the beaches in Florida on and off the winter months. Ms. Lynn Major, her husband and she are planning to travel when they can and hoping to spend more time with family and friends. Ms. Sherry Borison sold her Lunenburg house, and she's heading off to camp at the New England beaches this summer. And then she's going to take the camper and head west, spending the winter with her sister in California. She'll be back, though, come springtime. Ms. Delanda, his plan is to relocate to Orleans, Mass. Recently, Delanda's purchased a home down in Orleans on the Cape. He also plans to do some traveling, both domestically and overseas. And he's also planning to do some running, reading, and spending time hanging out at the beach as well. Ms. Sue Cavioli, she has no plans. Isn't that what retirement is about, right? Honestly, she says she just wants to relax and enjoy the ride with no guilt. She's really looking forward to spending more time with her family, especially her six grandkids, who range in age from eight weeks old to 15 years old. She's looking forward to attending their events and activities and babysitting as much as possible. She's also looking forward to trying new adventures with family and friends. So I think that we are, we can all offer our best wishes that all their plans come to be and that they, you know, enjoy their retirement in good health. They've worked hard, and the Lunenburg Public Schools has definitely benefited from all their time with us. So I'd offer my congratulations as well as a little bit of condolence for us because we're losing some really phenomenal people who have made a difference here in Lunenburg. And with that, I would ask Liz Peterson if she could actually play the video, do the screen share and play the video.
Were you able to get the audio?
Yeah, I'm going to jump in. Liz, there's no audio on our end.
Can you hear audio now?
No.
I'll start it again. You can?
No.
Okay. Okay, hold on. Yeah?
This is not how I do it.
Congratulations to all the retirees.
Got it.
Did you pick a strange year to go out on?
Thank you so much for all you've done for Lunenburg and its students over the years. But I am so excited that you are taking this next step on your journey to retirement.
We are so lucky to have been able to teach with you.
So many different schools, grades, subjects.
I always knew I could count on you for everything.
I am going to miss having you around. It's been so much fun at our admin meetings and when we've gotten together for birthday parties to hear about the stories. It's been great to get to know you on that level as well as a professional level.
And the kids of Lunenburg have been blessed to know you and have you.
You have always been an advocate for children.
I know it hasn't always been easy, but we have appreciated your perseverance and your dedication to those students and to the staff and to always pitch in whenever it's needed.
I am very sad, as you know, to see you go. I just want you to know that you are loved, and I know the parents of Lunenburg have loved you and appreciated you throughout these years.
I hope that retirement brings you so many opportunities and that it is relaxing and unstressful because Lord knows that things are stressful here too often, and everybody needs to move on from that.
Enjoy your retirement, enjoy your grandchildren, and enjoy all the things that are to come in the future. You certainly deserve it.
Wish you the best of luck in whatever it is that you do. You deserve all this time and so much happiness. We could not be happier for you and proud of you, but we are going to miss you so, so much.
Students and staff will miss you very much. You had a great career, a long, tenured, impactful career. We're very excited for you to enjoy all of your traveling and all of the other fun that you're going to have now that you have a little bit more time.
I hope you have a wonderful time and enjoy many, many, many new adventures and keep us posted. Remember, it's never too late to live happily ever after.
And I want to thank you again. I want you to enjoy that retirement and just have a blast.
Everything that your heart desires for your time.
Mary, congratulations. You've had such a wonderful career. You have so much to be proud of, and I'm so happy for you. I hope you enjoy everything that is coming. You certainly deserve it.
Hope you enjoy your retirement in every way you'd like to. Hopefully, we can see around the school sometimes.
Best luck on your retirement on the third day.
Bye, Susan!
All spring!
Come stop!
Really, I hope you have a wonderful retirement. Cheers to you.
Hi, retirees. Just a little poem from me to you about retirement. R. Rest and relaxation. Hopefully, you'll get lots of it now. E. Exciting new adventures. Go explore the world. T. Travel and lots of it, I hope. I. Invite friends to lunch. No more schedules now. R. Remember to keep in touch. We'll miss you. E. Enjoy every day to its fullest. M. Make time for yourself. You didn't get much of it when you were working. E. Embrace your freedom. Go explore the world. N. Nap often. We know we don't get any sleep at all. And T. Thankful for all you did for our school. And the best is yet to come. I've worked with all of you and wish you all the best going forward. Good luck.
Thank you. These simple words seem to be a truly inadequate expression of gratitude for all you have given and all you have meant to your colleagues and students. Thank you for your dedication to your vocation. Thank you for your commitment to the children of Lunenburg. Thank you for your passion for the work. Thank you for your professionalism, persistence, and perseverance. Maya Angelou said, "You can only become truly accomplished at something you love." It is readily apparent that each of you loved your work. Each of you is, therefore, truly accomplished. Staff and students alike were lucky to have you here in Lunenburg. You cannot be replaced, and you will surely be missed. Congratulations on a remarkable career and best wishes for an equally remarkable retirement. A new adventure awaits you.
So I would like to mention that this video was compiled again this year by one of our students, Jared Bowser, who will be graduating. And he worked with Liz Peterson to gather together all of the video messages and compile them into one video. And we will be sure to share the link to the video with all the retirees so that they'll have it as a keepsake from their time here with us. So I would like to just say thank you very, very much to Jared and to Liz for all their efforts to pull this together to honor our retirees.
Well, I would join in in saying the same. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the retirees for all their time spent for our students. We greatly appreciate it. So next on our agenda then is public comment. And this public comment is our comments that have to do with agenda items this evening. So if you have a public comment, if you could raise your hand. I'm not seeing any public comments.
Nor am I.
Okay. All right, then. Then we will continue. Next, to review and approve minutes, but we have none. Is that correct?
Correct.
And we also have no line item transfers this evening?
Correct.
And then that brings us to the superintendent's report.
It's a relatively brief report this evening. I want to provide you all an update on the middle high school internet issues. The newly installed firewall seems to have addressed the intermittent issues that we were having with the internet. We will begin to lift some of the restrictions that were put in place to reduce the demand on the system, and we'll begin that next week. Early release days. Just a reminder to all of our families that June 15th and June 16th will be early release days. June 16th is the last day of school, and it's just around the corner. And lastly, just a few comments relative to the weather forecast for next week with temperatures expected to be in the low 90s early in the week. We would just ask that parents dress their children appropriately for the weather and send them to school if possible with a refillable bottle so that they might stay well hydrated during the day. This is particularly relevant to the Turkey Hill Elementary School. Teachers at Turkey Hill have been encouraged to plan to bring classes outdoors to a shady spot for class should the classroom feel too warm. We will also have on-hand bottled water that will be made available to students should they not have a refillable water bottle with them. And we have already identified for the staff some air-conditioned locations at Turkey Hill that can be used as a cooling station for students or staff if necessary. So we're anticipating the heat, and we've, you know, made the plans to be able to address concerns of staff relative to the heat in the building. So that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have our student representatives' report. Dylan?
Good evening, everybody. I can definitely attest to what Dr. Burnham said about the Wi-Fi. It has been tremendously better at the high school, so we thank them for their swift response. In other high school news, classes are beginning to wrap up their respective curriculums, and students are continuing to work hard towards the end of the year without finals, so everyone's very happy. The class of 2023 is very excited to announce that their online Live in the Nightlife store is online, and it's featuring merchandise designed by local artists, including the high school's very own Mr. DePerry. The LHS Student Council would like to thank their graduating seniors for their service to the school. We wish them the best of luck in all their future endeavors. Senior motorcade and breakfast occurred yesterday, and graduation is this Saturday. In the middle school, yearbooks are for sale for $40 on jostens.com, or you can find more information on the middle school website. And in the elementary school, grade three and four have completed the MCAS testing with the final session for fifth graders on June 8th. And in the primary school, to reiterate what Dr. Burnham said, parents are encouraged to send students to school with refillable water bottles and dress accordingly for the weather, and also apply sunscreen to their students prior to the school day. And field days for these students are June 9th for fifth graders, June 10th for third graders, and June 11th for fourth graders. And I'd also like to say to our retirees, congratulations. I've had the privilege of knowing most of you, and you are all a fantastic group of educators, so we thank you very much. Thank you.
We thank you very much, Dylan. All right, next, moving on to new business, we have the FY22 Extended Day and ELC handbooks.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. That video was awesome and it kind of like hit home. Very touching and making it more real to me. Once I gave my notice, I just thought, you know, I just worked every day like I did every day, but now that really made it final. Gave it. As you can see, it's bringing tears to my eyes. But I only have two updates. One is to change the director and contact information throughout both handbooks as there is a new hire, and the second one is for the Early Learning Center handbook, and that is to add that that program will be closed during winter break in December. And that will be it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Perry? Then I believe what we need to do is have a motion to accept both of these handbooks. Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly, and I'll make a motion to accept the changes to both these handbooks.
Is there a second? Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro, and I'll second that motion.
We'll call?
Yes.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes. And to that, I would also like to say thank you to Mrs. Perry for all the work that she's done in this program. Back to when my 31-year-old was in the extended day program. So that's a long time.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll miss you all.
Next is the LEA contract ratification.
So I'll invite Mr. Cassidy to present a summary here.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, business manager. I'm happy to announce that the negotiating team for administration in the school I'm happy to announce that the negotiating team for administration in the school committee has met with LEA, the Lunenburg Educational Association negotiating team. And we have settled on a three-year MOA, which is being presented to the school committee tonight. We began working on this, the negotiations of this contract in January. We've settled on a three-year contract. Or extension to the contract, I should say. So we worked very hard going back and forth. It was a good experience. And I would just like to provide some highlights of that agreement, if I may. There is, not to extend this meeting, but there's a lot of small language changes that I'm not going to go through. You know, just adding and deleting some things and clarifying some deadlines. We did add 30 minutes per week to the president, the release time for the president. We negotiated some time for senior teachers to have an opportunity to use personal days, one personal day per year on a blackout day, which is time around long weekends and holiday weeks. So those are more operational things. So we also move forward on some cost-related offerings. And we're offering a buyback sick leave package up to $7,500 to teachers with 20 years or more experience to buy back some sick time. But they have to announce well in advance of when they're retiring. So there's a huge advantage to that. It can affect the budget. It can affect the way we effectively teach students, and it's just a planning tool, which is pretty valuable. The three-year contract is basically settled on a, for next year, a 2.5% increase. FY23, a 1.5% increase. And then finally, in FY24, a 1% increase. Part of the, another cost measure in this is the elimination and the reduction of the Master Teacher Program and the Service Recognition Program. So it's taking some of those costs and rolling them, those contract costs, and including them into their collective bargaining agreement salary schedule. The total cost of the contract over the next three years is projected to be $670,722. As it stands right now, our local budget can afford, as we move forward with 2.5% increases, we will be able to sustain the salaries within this contract based upon that amount and agreed upon COLAs. I am, on behalf of the superintendent, we're moving this forward for your consideration and approval tonight.
Mr. Cassidy, could you just clarify one thing for me? The sick day buyback is a one-time payment of up to $2,500, correct?
Yeah, I want to clarify that. So the annual cost is projected to be about $7,500. An individual would only be entitled to $2,500. Thank you for that correction. I was looking for total annual cost. We ordinarily get about three retirees per year. So that's what we're projecting on an annual cost if they meet the deadline to notify the superintendent, too. So we may have sudden retirements, but they're not going to meet that deadline. They wouldn't be entitled to the $2,500. And it's presuming that they have the sick time to buy back as well. So it's $2,500, not $7,500. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the ratification of the contract with the LEA as outlined by Mr. Cassidy? Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro, and I'll make a motion to ratify the LEA contract as proposed by Mr. Cassidy or outlined by Mr. Cassidy.
Mr. Leighton?
Second my motion.
And then a roll call vote?
Just for clarification in advance of the vote, the town manager is with us this evening as she does represent the town in terms of approving the contracts, even with the school department contracts. All righty. So I'll start with Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshambo?
Yes.
And Ms. Lemieux?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Lemieux.
Thanks for the hard work on, you know, Mr. Cassidy and Superintendent Burnham.
So next is permission to post a mathematics teacher.
So I'll also invite Mr. Cassidy to join this conversation. We're actually going to be withdrawing this request this evening because we finally did receive some information relative to the ESER grant. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Cassidy now to explain.
Good evening. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. I just want to give an update. We will be pulling the permission to post. That doesn't mean that you may, you could see this position in the future. As we were developing the agenda, and we did get an announcement on the ESER III grant. So Lunenburg will be getting $1.35 million to be spent on educational services over the next three years. So that's the ESER III grant. So that was really good news. And we are developing a strategy for spending that money. Now that strategy has to be presented to stakeholders in the community. So that means staff and parents for feedback on the way we're going to spend the money. So we're anticipating that the school committee will be voting on this or at least seeing it and voting on it over the next few weeks. So that's why we're essentially pulling the position because we have to dig a little bit deeper. We have to get some feedback from the community. And we'll be moving forward all positions that are being recommended under the ESER III grant. And there are certain, the ESER III grant has more conditions than the previous COVID relief packages. You know, the the models of measure for the way this money has to be spent has to be in the grant application. At various points during the grant application, during the grant implementation, we're going to have to provide data on the results of this money. Very different than SOI and SOII and the COVID relief money that we've been getting, which has really been focused on any COVID-related costs. This is really money to be spent to cover the gaps suffered from the pandemic. So that's the update. It's good news. We're not done yet. We'll have a plan in place as we move forward, and we'll share that information with the school committee.
You know, we're hoping to solicit input, develop a plan, push the plan out, solicit that input, and share it with the committee at the June 16th meeting. But we're anticipating that we may want to schedule a June 30th meeting for the school committee to review any feedback that we got and review any adjustments to the plan that we initially developed and, you know, endorse the plan. And at that time, we'll be looking for you to approve the positions that we would be seeking to fund with the grant. That way we can start posting the positions. So that's the big picture planning at this point.
That's very exciting news. Is there anyone on the committee that would like to make a comment or have a question about any of that? Okay, moving forward then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Social Studies update.
So this evening, I am really excited to have Mrs. LeBlanc before you to give you a presentation on all the work that we've been doing these last couple of years since the new curriculum standards were adopted by the state. Ms. LeBlanc has been doing this work for the last two years as a master teacher project. She will not have to continue in the master teacher project because she will become our K-8 social studies curriculum leader. So I'm really happy to have her here tonight to explain where we've been, where we're at now, and what's coming down the road. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. LeBlanc.
Thanks so much, everyone. And because I have so many roles in the district, I will also say thank you, thank you to the school committee. Thank you for your vote tonight. We're really pleased with the contract. And we had such a, a really good time negotiating. Maybe that's because some of us are nerds and we love that stuff, but really, it's actually that we genuinely like being together. I always like when the, you know, when the district's attorney says things like, "You guys laugh the most out of any group that I negotiate with." So just thank you for a wonderful collaborative relationship. And to our retirees, just congratulations to all of them. We had our LEA retirement party. And it seems like this can't possibly be true, but with our retirees last year and this year, they had well over 200 years of service to Lunenburg Public Schools. Like, so to say 200 years of service to Lunenburg Public Schools is just tremendous. And I think the last year felt like at least 100 of those 200. But we're just happy that everyone made it right here. So this is my other favorite thing to talk about, which is social studies. I'm not sure how the presentation, do you pull it up, Dr. Burnham, and then?
You should have the capability to screen share.
Perfect. Okay. Probably going to see all my tabs, though, but here we go. All right, let me start the presentation. So as Dr. Burnham said, I have been functioning in this role of master teacher focusing on the K through 8 social studies curriculum. That does not mean that I am not very invested in our 9 through 12 curriculum, but we have incredibly capable hands in the 9 through 12. Warren Stevenson is the department chair for the Social Sciences Department and History. And I know that they are working in close collaboration with their new civics projects, which I'll talk about. They also work with the English Department with Mary Foyle. So it's definitely not a solo process, but I can explain the work that I've been doing for you today. So as curriculum often changes about every decade, the Department of Ed will put out a new set of standards. Sometimes it's more than a decade. I believe that social studies was 2005. And then they started looking at it around 2015, which just so happens to be when Lunenburg was ending a curriculum review. We really had a lot of representatives working together. We had a task force using the NCSS, which is the National Council of Social Studies, in combination with the standards that we had from Massachusetts at that time, and something new called the C3 standards. And the C3 standards are career, college career and civics oriented. Those are from the National Council of the Social Studies. But the focus is to take the sole idea that we are learning facts and to make sure that we are teaching skills. So the C3 standards in the social sciences were really to focus on some of the skills that we need our students to use. And Massachusetts and D E S I used those as a model when they reinvented and reinvigorated our curriculum. So it just so happened that we ended our review. I believe, if you remember, we presented this 102 pages to the district, and promptly the next year, D E S I sent us new standards. So it's taken us a little while to kind of look at them, but we started implementing, you know, new standards as soon as they were announced from D E S I in 2018. So that was where we knew what was changing. I started this work as a master teacher in identifying changes, the needs that we had, and what other districts were identifying as needs around the new curriculum. Saw a lot of commonalities with other school districts. It's the best way to work anyway, is to see who else has the great ideas and how we can combine together. And we started some implementation of the new curriculum. For many of the grade levels, the changes were not significant. They were increased skills that I'll talk about and increased kind of in practice of how we're teaching history and the social sciences. But their standards and their core curriculum maybe didn't change that much. However, there were a few grade levels that did change significantly, and that is what we really needed to identify and then figure out what we were going to do to help equip those educators. And we've moved through that the last year as best we could with COVID. And we are working on a consistent implementation of new curriculum. I believe that right now we can say that K through 12, we are in the new curriculum. The exception would be that next year, 7th grade will start the new curriculum, as I'll show you when we get to some of the kind of titles of what each grade level teaches. 6th and 7th grade are a two-year course study. And we needed the students to do a full year of 6th grade before they could do a full year of 7th grade. So that has been delayed, and that'll be starting next year. The significant changes, always we are looking for what we need for purchases, which is trying to be cognizant of what we have, and then also what's the best ways to make sure that we can get our educators what they need. Maps and globes, my favorite things in the world. So we bought lots of maps. A couple of years ago, I remember us talking about the budget and putting some money in for new maps. We have, particularly in the middle school, where the emphasis is heavy on some significant geographical skills. We really beefed up what we have for our maps, and they are much more recent, updated, relevant. We can write on them with whiteboard markers. We also have looked at text sets, textbooks, and cross-curricular novels, especially in our younger grades. And into the middle school, we do a lot with ELA and the combination with history and the social sciences. So one example, I'm back teaching 5th grade this year for a little bit, and we have the civil rights as a social studies topic in 5th grade, social studies curriculum. But we are reading lines of little in fifth grade, social studies curriculum, but we are reading Lines of Little Rock, uh which is a wonderful novel in ELA that focuses on the civil rights movement and the Little Rock Nine. So we've been working through things like that. What do we need? That's an ongoing process because we do not want to purchase things and then find out that they're not exactly what we want. So it's a little bit of letting our educators settle into the new standards and then seeing what we really think will um kind of have the legs to go the distance there. Supplemental materials, also something we look at. Newsella, uh we have a subscription for that. That was um something that we've been using a lot of using Brain Pop in the younger grades, the short videos, very engaging for students, cover wide variety of these topics. So any uh materials we can link up, we've been identifying those and will continue to do so. My focus really was primarily on eighth grade. And that is because they were the grade level with the most significant changes. They kept nothing. They were a world history grade level and they moved to US civics. So every standard was out and every new standard was in, no materials connected. Um, they needed a lot of help and support, um not because the educators are not fantastic, but because they they had zero things to kind of get this moving. So that was a joy for me because I love teaching that stuff. Um, I this quote, I think, is really, really important. This really uh came straight from Desi's standards for history and the social sciences. It's on one of the first pages. This really is our guiding principle in our K through twelve education here in Lunenburg. It is all Massachusetts students will be educated in the histories of the Commonwealth, United States and the world. They will be prepared to make informed civic choices and assume their responsibility for strengthening equality, justice and liberty in and beyond the United States. And I I think they could not have uh worded that better. That is exactly what our goal for our students is and should be. We have um just two slides to show you if you're looking for a particular grade level. This is how they categorize the so scope and sequence, basically the the standards and what their year of history and social science looks like. So you'll see kindergarten is what we would expect our kindergarten students to be learning about. The basics of living, learning and working together. Those are real life applicable skills to kindergarten students. Um, but they build on each other and that is what you'll see that grade one then adds to kindergarten, living and learning and working together. And then they add the vocabulary of, well, you're doing those things in kindergarten. That means you are being a citizen of your classroom. And what does it mean to be a citizen? And then we build continually throughout the curriculum. Sixth and seventh grade, uh we have been in the in Lunenburg doing ancient civilizations as a sixth grade course, world geography as a seventh. We now are splitting up. Um, this has been, you know, it has been a change for these educators. Uh but what it allows our students to do is learn about Mesopotamia in the ancient world, look at the lands and the countries and the groups of people who now inhabit Mesopotamia. And what is Iraq, Iran? What are those countries like now? So we are uh changing the focus, even though it's the same content, the students are looking at it through a different lens of what was it like in the past and what is it like now? Here, eighth grade, that was obviously the biggest change um from world history, which got moved up to the high school to make sure they're covering that there. And implementing a full year of civics, uh which I think so many people were really excited to see us kind of put that emphasis there, make it a full year course. Sure, we are graduating students who have all of those skills. One of the most important things that is a common thread throughout the K to twelve social science curriculum is a set of standards for practice. This language stays the same through every single grade level. These are the skills that we want the students to get. So it's not just about learning about the role of a pharaoh in ancient Egypt. It is about being able to organize information from multiple primary sources that talk about pharaohs. And it might be about distinguishing opinions about how powerful pharaohs could or should have been in that time period. So really focusing on the skills of our curriculum and not just focusing on uh the memorization of facts. I'm gonna focus particularly on number one, which I think is relevant to where we're going today. The first sk- standard for practice is civic knowledge, skills and dispositions. And in the bold yellow, I've highlighted the four things that they're talking about. Step one is civic knowledge. We need to make sure our students in all grade levels are starting to learn the knowledge and the content. They do need to know that information. But then they also need the intellectual skills that we see in a whole bunch of other subject areas like identifying and accessing and analyzing and assessing understanding. Participatory skills. I think I'm most excited about this one. We are actually asking our students to be more engaged, more engaged in their learning, but more engaged with each other, more engaged with their educators, more engaged with their community um to not just be passive students, but to be active, to get involved in a process for change. And that certainly links up to the civics projects that we will talk about in a minute. And dispositions, this really helps cement um what we have as our core guiding principles for our students in Lunenburg, all of them, that they be compassionate, that they be respectful to each other, that they are committed to equality and to looking out for each other, that they are listeners, that they communicate effectively. So this is just a particularly important standard um that we have for practice. Some of the work that I uh was specifically doing in this role as master teacher the past few years um prior to COVID because it wasn't in-person um work that we were doing. But it's called a a group called CDHM. We work not just with one district, but with, I think, thirteen or something across the state. Uh a lot of grant funding coming from Desi through this. It's a consortium of educators. We meet by grade level, but we also meet as a a large group several times a school year. We are creating grade levels, um pacing guides, units of instruction. I want to show you some of them just because you can kind of see how bring this links. Can you see that? Okay, so this is uh work that is in the process. The last time was, right, March six, twenty twenty. I think we met a week before COVID shut us down. But this is work that I've specifically been doing in the sixth grade unit, working on um Sub-Saharan Africa, which was never a part of sixth grade before. So um you'll see there's there's quite a bit of work in here. We're looking at transfer skills. What can students do from one room to the next? We're looking at large understandings and essential questions. We are targeting specific knowledge because they do need to know things. They need to know them in their minds. Um, they need to, you know, m- memorize or be able to puzzle their way out of howing how to find information. They need these skills, how to read maps, how to identify and understand um what a combination of the geography of a location and the people that live there and the changes that they go through. One thing that I particularly love that we've been focusing on um is some performance tasks, which is great, the way we're assessing students in a in a more genuine manner, I'll say, but I actually love doing this work of possible misconceptions. This is really important uh to our students. It Africa, Sub-Saharan Africa happens to be an e- excellent example of this. But we have uh a lot of people who come to the table and students who come into our classroom with misconceptions about history, about locations, about places, about people. And we are actively doing this work of untangling their misconceptions. So we can make sure that we are getting your base, accurate knowledge in. So making sure that we're our students are referring to Africa as a continent and not a country. But those basic things are actually really important um in the the grand scheme of making sure our students really understand these large concepts we're trying to help them understand. Okay, if that went back. There was a question um that a Dr. Burnham had fielded about the local government tie-in and wherein social studies curriculum are we seeing a connection to students understanding what government life in Lunenburg is like. So I've laid out these for you. In kindergarten and first grade, they are seen, it's seen in the curriculum as standards asking them to know their community members and to know the community's members' roles in government particularly. When they get to first grade, they add voting, a concept of voting and electing someone. What's an election? And then, as I had mentioned before, what does it mean to be a citizen and what are your roles in being a citizen of your classroom? Or of your school or of your town? When they get to third grade, third grade focuses about half of their curriculum on Massachusetts cities and towns today and in history. And that is uh something that they've always had in that third grade curriculum. So not much has changed there. But when we get to fifth grade, they really um amped up these standards quite a bit here in terms of uh the not just focusing on US government, but also making sure students understand the responsibilities of government, federal, state and local. And eighth grade, uh you can see kind of every other year or so they cycle back through these concepts. Eighth grade is uh is really um a a huge turning point for students because they're at the age where they want to do things and they're asking questions about why someone gets the power to do something, why they don't have the power to do it. So there's a section on rights and responsibility of citizens, but also structure of Massachusetts state and local government. And I believe my next slide will show you the specific standards. They are asking them to compare and contrast federal versus state versus local laws. Who gets to have control over what and how much control? Leadership structures. Tax-supported facilities and services. So things that they are impacted by every day that they don't realize they are impacted by every day. And then thinking about, well, who makes those decisions then? So understanding the functions of towns with mayors versus select boards or city councils, school committees. Um, open town meetings, all sorts of fun things. I went to school in the Midwest and my professor was obsessed with the fact that I came from a place that had a town meeting. That was all he ever wanted to talk about was how wonderful town meeting was. Think he had never been to a town meeting before. He loved it. So particularly um the eighth grade civics that I've been working on uh with the excellent educators that we have. We are so lucky, not just Massachusetts, but I'm really we are so lucky that when um Supreme Court Justice Sandra J. O'Connor left office, she made it her point to increase the civic knowledge of students in the United States by creating iCivics. It is a fantastic resource and website. They got right on the changing Desi standards and aligned everything to the Massachusetts state standards, to the lesson, to the picture, to the item, to every single thing that they could do. It is one hundred percent free. They provide us with frequent webinars. I've attended many this year, tons of PD offerings. And they always come and support the CDHM group that we are a part of. So you know, I'm able to email the Massachusetts coordinator of iCivics. You know, he uh makes himself incredibly accessible to me uh and to our district and we are very, very lucky. Our teachers who tried that out this year really thought it was a a wonderful way of being able to go through this material um with fidelity. It's also really engaging for students. The games are so fun. I will encourage all of you to go to iCivics. I think you can sign up for free. You don't have to be a teacher. Some of the games like the um do I have a right, which is focused on the Bill of Rights and you become an attorney waiting for people to come through your door and tell you their problem. Then you assess what First Amendment right they might be or what amendment right they might be dealing with. Then you assign them to an attorney in your law firm and then they take the case to trial and it becomes incredibly addictive. So please go on and and try um play those games. Especially if you maybe have a student who might have gone through the curriculum and and wants to show you how it works. The first year of implementation for the civics projects is still happening because we're not quite done this year. That is going to be a growing process because we are learning that there are some restrictions due to COVID because our ability to move around and access people in offices is is often a little bit different this year. But if you are a teacher in the middle school, you'd know that our our students are often running with this because we're getting um surveys almost daily saying, you know, this group is focusing or this homeroom is focusing on this concept. Can you ask your students to take this survey so we can identify their needs and track the data and figure out who's in charge of making that decision? Uh, so it is expected that as committee members likely will be hearing um from students, if not this year. I think moving forward, they're gonna have a lot of questions. They want to know how decisions are made. They want to be a part of the process. And that is it. Um, I am happy to take any questions or any concerns.
Does anybody on the committee have a question? Mr. Layton?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Miss LeBlanc, uh for the in-depth presentation. I did have a question about uh just textbooks. Uh, do you, do you guys look into online textbooks to to save from the kids carrying books around?
Yeah, um, we are looking into all sorts of options. So eighth grade has been able to avoid the textbook with iCivics being um totally online and obviously couldn't come at a better time, huh, with everything being online and those online options uh makes it so accessible. Our seventh grade textbooks are physically in the classroom. We have about eighty of them for the grade level, but they have an online component. So right now, I think when we look at textbooks, it's pretty much been um manufacturers are are offering us, you know, the physical textbook with the online version. I think that we may look at some textbooks in the future. I have a few grade levels that I I'm kind of speaking with. Um, and we we've gathered some samples and looked at some things. I think online is a great. There are wonderful textbooks that are not gigantic, though yes, many history textbooks and social studies textbooks are very, very thick. Um, sometimes it's about the presentation of the material. I don't want to say, you know, no to textbooks. I know sometimes that can be a push. I think it uh the right textbooks are very, very beneficial to our educators and to our students. But I think we're being really thoughtful about them um and making sure that we're making really good decisions before we dive in. Um, you know, and no more like two hundred copies of anything. We're really good at making a class set and then asking that there be an online version. So our kids are pretty much never lugging home any giant textbooks. That's always our goal.
Thank you. The only other thing I want to add was I I really appreciate the civics project. I think that gets them the students more involved and more interested in uh local government. Um, and I I would never want to add more to your plate, uh but I do love the idea of having them being able to go to meetings or watch the YouTube meetings um in all the different areas and really find an area that interests them. I think it's great when we get uh younger people involved and on committees. I think it's great when we get, uh, younger people involved and on committees.
Yeah, yeah. And it is, um, uh, just a wonderful thing about students of this age. I can't remember what group I was just meeting with. Something school-wise and saying, you know, kids are these, these middles, or these college kids are gonna change the world. And I said, these 10-year-olds are gonna change the world. You gotta sit in my class and hear what these kids are talking about. It's not, you know, they're, they're starting to become interested at such a younger age. And that is wonderful. So I'm hoping we see that in our communities, um, that the engagement and involvement increases.
Still anything else? Um, just a comment from me. This is incredible work. This is very, very well done from one who's written a lot of curriculum. I, I can tell you, um, very impressive. Thank you very much, Mrs. Laplanc.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. It, it's nice to see that we have, um, new curriculum leaders with the new model who are very passionate about their subject matter and about developing good curriculum and engaging the kids in their, in their area. So, I hope, I hope that shone through, uh, with Mrs. Laplanc's, uh, presentation this evening.
Absolutely. Um, next, under old business, we have contract ratification for paraprofessionals.
And at this point, I would invite Mr. Cassidy to review.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cassidy, Business Manager. Uh, another, some more good news. Uh, I'm proud to announce that, um, our negotiating team uh, has settled a three-year contract with the Lunenburg Paraprofessional Association. We began meeting with this group in around the end of January as well. Met several times. And once again, a good collaborative effort to, to negotiate benefits, uh, for our employees. Also, uh, benefits that will, uh, help our students as well, and I'll explain that in a minute. I'll just cut to the, the, um, one of the big costs, which is we've settled with a, uh, with the group, um, for the next three years at at a 2% COLA, a cost of living, um, adjustment for the next three years. So uh, two, two and a two for the next three years. Also included in, in the, uh, the new contract would be an additional, uh, paid holiday for our, our paraprofessionals. I just want to remind the committee, the, these are hourly employees. They, they get, they, they get paid when they showed up, when they show up. They're not a, an annualized salary that we spread over a, a year. So they haven't been getting paid some of the holidays and we're, uh, we've bargained that into the contract. A benefit, um, for some of our students is a stipend, um, for our paraprofessionals that, um, work with some of our, um, medically fragile, uh, students. And it's a $300, $360 stipend per year, uh, to assist those students. Now, these are, um, in, in, intensive, uh, work for these students. Uh, it's not just our instructional, uh, paraprofessionals. These are really our hands-on, paraprofessionals that may be working with life skills, uh, students, which, once again medically, other medically fragile situations. Uh, we're also, uh, adjusting the longevity, the hourly, uh, longevity, uh, adjustment next school year. FY '23 and then it'll roll into FY '24 as well. Um, another benefit that, uh, we're offering the paraprofessionals is additional course reimbursement. We, um, have some good paraprofession, we have some great paraprofessionals. Let me just say that. Uh, obviously we want them to advance academically. Uh, this has been a barrier for them. It's been a very low, um, course reimbursement. We'd love to see them advance on the salary schedule, but more we would like them, uh, we'd like to foster them into future educators for our district. And that has, it has been happening. Uh, probably not as, as frequently as we would like to see that. So we're, we're really enticing, uh, this group to take advantage of that. Uh, so we can foster them into teaching positions. And then finally, I, another cost that's associated with this contract is, and I, I'll say this publicly. I know the school committee is aware of it, that uh, sometimes when the district is short on subs, some of our paraprofessionals are promoted to the teachers when they're, when they're out. Or in some cases, um, the, the, the paraprofessionals are promoted to, uh, the teacher during that day because they're the best fit, especially for our special education classrooms. So the, uh, that they get, uh, we're adjusting the pay, uh, for them to step into that teaching role. And then also, uh, when they're, when they substitute for a teacher on a long-term basis, we're adjusting some of those pays. So I just wanna follow up with the committee on, uh, you know, the, the total cost that we're projecting, um, for this three, uh, three-year contract is approximately $119,110. This cost, um, can be absorbed into the local budget over the next three years. It's, the positions are, uh, sustainable. The salaries are sustainable. So it's on behalf of the superintendent, I, we, we're moving this, this recommendation forward, uh, for your review and approval tonight, uh, at the school committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy about the paraprofessional agreement? Uh, seeing none? Then I need, I would entertain a motion to accept this paraprofessional contract as outlined. Ms. Shapiro?
This is Sophie Shapiro and I'll make a motion to accept the paraprofessional contract as outlined by Mr. Cassidy.
And is there a second? Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly and I will second that motion.
All right.
Ready for roll call?
We are.
And again, um, the town manager will be included in this vote. So we'll begin with Ms. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
I'm abstaining. My sister-in-law is a paraprofessional.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
And Ms. Lemieux?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, our next item is, uh, to reorganize our reorganization. Uh, Mr. Layton?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to table that for our next meeting.
And Ms. Shapiro?
Second that motion.
And, um, any discussion on that? Okay. Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes. And that brings us to the DESI guidance. Dr. Burnham?
So in our last meeting, um, I shared with you that there had been some newly released updated guidance from the Department of Education. Um, I think it's important to note that when the department makes these changes, uh, to guidance, it really is based on recommendations that are coming from, uh, the Mass Department of Public Health and the, the COVID team, um, that the governor had put together, the medical team. So one of the items was, um, that we could, uh, dispense with having to require students to wear masks outdoors. Additional to that, um, shift in that requirement, uh, they were also reducing the requirement for a specific social distance if the mask were off. So no masks outdoors and no need to worry about the distance between children outdoors without a mask. Um, one of the other items was, um, that schools could move to cleaning those high-touch surface areas, light switches, handrails, uh, doorknobs, desk surfaces, the, the disinfecting down to one time a day. Currently, um, we have custodians that are, uh, moving through the halls and, and hitting those high-touch surface areas. And our teachers in the classroom at the, um, middle high school have been cleaning desk surfaces with a disinfectant between classes. With so little time, um, left in the year, I didn't wanna make changes that would cause any distress or upset to families who made their decision to send their children back to school five days a week in April, based on the current practices that were in place at that time. So in other words, I didn't want, uh, to have many families be upset by such a change and be requesting to move to a remote model for the remainder of the year. So we did, uh, send out a survey to parents uh, asking them as to whether or not they were comfortable with no masks outdoors for gym class, no masks outdoors for recess. Um, and targeted more specifically to the middle high school parents, their comfort level with, um, no longer disinfecting the surfaces of the desks between classes. Um, the survey results, uh, we were approaching 90% of, of families that completed the survey indicating that they were comfortable with, um, removing the mask mandate outdoors, even given that there would be no minimum distance requirement outdoors unmasked. Uh, same was true for the PE class, PE and recess. Um, you know, we had the same response. I did ask the principals to review the survey results and we did ask parents to complete with contact information and the name of the student first and last so that we would know which parents were not feeling comfortable. I asked the principals to reach out to those parents and have a conversation with them and, um, some, some indicated, oh, I didn't quite understand the question. No, I'm fine. I, I, I would be fine with no masks outdoors or, um, some of them indicated, well, I'm not really comfortable with it, but I'm not gonna have a problem if that's what the decision is. I, I will still send my, my student to school, um, five days a week on campus. Um, others indicated that they would be comfortable if it was allowable for students to keep their masks on if they chose, if the family made that, that choice. Absolutely. Um, students can continue to wear masks outdoors if that is what the family, uh, would prefer to have happen. Um, so the recommendation before you this evening in regards to masking outdoors is that we move forward beginning, assuming approval this evening, we would begin as soon as tomorrow, uh, to no longer require kiddos to have to wear their mask when they're outdoors. In regards to the disinfecting, um, the, the parents indicated, um, that they were comfortable to uh, approximately a 66 to 70% range. People feeling comfortable, clearly that's not as high a comfort level as, uh, was the masking outdoors. That was closer to 90% of the, um, respondents indicating that they were comfortable. Given that there are two weeks remaining and given that there's a lesser comfort level uh, with dispensing with the cleaning protocol, um, I am going to recommend that we just maintain the cleaning protocol as is through the remainder of the year. Um, and we've heard from the Department of Ed regarding next fall, restrictions are going to be eliminated. The only thing that they're, um, still contemplating would be continuing to ask students at the elementary level and in their mind that, that would include our primary school and our elementary school. Um, because those kiddos are the group that have not yet had access to vaccination. Um, they are going to continue to monitor data, monitor progress relative to vaccinations for our younger students. And they will be relying on the advice that they are getting from the medical professionals and the public health professionals that they have been working with throughout, um, the pandemic. So guidance relative to that is pending, but generally speaking, we will be back to operation as normal uh, starting in the fall. So we would dispense with the additional cleaning at that time. I will say that we also wanted to take time to check in with the Board of Health, the local Board of Health. Um, and what we heard from them is that they are they're in support of the changes that the Department of Ed has, uh, released on all counts. Um, so in other words, they would be okay with no longer disinfecting desks between classes. They would be okay with no mask requirement, no distance requirement for kiddos outdoors. So that's, uh, in, in my mind, that's reassuring, um, that the parents feel comfortable. Um, and, and that our local Board of Health, uh, feels comfortable with these recommendations. So in summary, I would recommend that we, um, remove the mask mandate for outdoors and that we continue with the disinfecting protocols in the classroom through the end of this school year. Um, I can tell you that, um, Mrs. McGuire, our Health and Safety Officer, is on this meeting this evening. Uh, so if you have questions or if you would like to hear, um, from her, I would invite her to jump in and, and add any comments she feels, uh, would be appropriate.
Uh, and just one thing to add, uh, we did receive official notification today that for quarantine, uh, now if, if you're identified as a contact, it's within six feet, 15 minutes while indoors. So they made that, um, designation now. So I do have guidance um, for quarantine for outdoors. So that was the one, the one thing I was waiting on.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Burnham or Mrs. McGuire? Uh, Mr. Layton?
Thank you. Uh, I did wanna just have a few comments and a question. Um, I appreciate the survey and reaching out to parents. I thought that was great uh, to get the comfort level, um, on both issues. For planning purposes, last meeting we talked about planning and needed time to plan. Was there any discussion on the masks for the, the little kids, uh, about, you know, uh, either lanyards or, uh, maybe teachers bringing out extra masks in case the kids lose their masks outside?
Um, we did give some consideration to that. Couple of things. First, we'd have to be looking for a specific kind of lanyard if we were going to be providing them for all kiddos. They need to be a breakaway style because they, a lanyard can become a choke hazard. Sometimes kids are playing outside. They slip, they fall, could get caught up on something or, you know, another student could grab it. It, it could potentially be a, a safety issue. Additionally, um, you know, we're, we're, we're down to the final days of the school year and, um, the, the fiscal year. Uh, so to get an order placed, get So to get an order placed, get the lanyards in and get them distributed, we'd probably be, be down to the last couple of days of the school year. But we did, we did give some careful consideration to that as well.
What about teachers having extra masks, bringing out extra masks for?
We have extra cloth masks available. We also should have some disposables still available. Is that right, Mrs. McGuire? So those, those would be available, you know, should a student drop it, lose it, you know, when they're outdoors. Because they'll need to put that mask back on when they come indoors. So we feel more comfortable that, you know, we should be able to, to manage this transition.
Just a follow-up question on that same topic. Will the students be given options like ideas? If you put your mask around your wrist, maybe you won't lose it. If you stick it under your chin and just pull it down, then maybe you won't lose it, you know? Well, they have a few options because I know there will be some that will need a few options.
Absolutely. It's just like, you know, delivery of the curriculum and assessment, it's important to give students choice for them to demonstrate what they know. So what I can tell you is our nurses have been absolutely phenomenal this year. They have gone into classrooms. They have talked to kids about this, the safety protocols early in the year. Always coming up with, with good advice for the kiddos, and I have no doubt that, that there will be some guidance around options that are appropriate and safe for students. And teachers can reinforce those on a daily basis prior to heading outdoors. So absolutely.
Is there anything else from the committee? Then does someone have a motion to make? Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly, and I'd like to make a motion to eliminate the outdoor mask requirement while maintaining the cleaning protocols that are in place until the end of the school year.
Mr. Leighton?
Second that motion.
Ready for roll call?
We are.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Thank you all very much for allowing us the time to explore what, what the impact of, of this change would be. And again, allowing us time to connect with our local Board of Health to be sure that they were also in full support of any changes that we might make.
Thank you for being so thorough. So next we have public comment open to any item under the purview of the school committee. Mr. Leighton?
Thank you. I know it's been a, a long year, and I just want to thank all the negotiation committees who've really been working all year long, working on one-year contracts and then getting these three-year contracts. I think it is really important, and it was great to see the, the teamwork to get this done so that we can get back to educating our students. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public comment from the public? I'm not seeing any. So we'll continue to committee reports. Athletic advisory?
We are meeting Monday at six thirty.
All right. Finance committee will be meeting a week from tonight. PTO?
The PTO is meeting on the fourteenth.
And school councils, the primary school?
Primary school, the school is done meeting for the school year.
And the elementary school?
We've not met.
The middle school did meet on Monday, May twenty-fourth. A discussion was had about the staffing changes for next school year. Those changes were outlined with the addition of Mr. McGrath as the assistant principal and Ms. Fletcher becoming the full-time social worker. The MCAS, ELA part of the MCAS testing had been completed at that time. Despite a few tech glitches, everything else worked out just fine. The end-of-year celebrations will have a different kind of look this year. The eighth graders will be in the auditorium socially distanced, and parents will be looking on via live stream. The sixth and seventh grade will have an alternative celebratory ending, but that was still in the works at the time of our meeting. We reviewed the handbooks for next year. We talked about summer school staffing. And Mr. Santry was happy to report that overall the students were doing great and happy to finish the school year physically in school. And that was it from the middle school. The high school?
Our June first meeting was postponed due to the turnover at the high school, and we don't have a set date yet.
All right. Capital planning. We don't have a representative. Oh, we do. Who's the capital planning? Now I don't have my list. Who's?
That's me.
That's you, Brian?
I haven't heard.
But you haven't met. No.
No.
The wellness advisory?
We will be meeting on Tuesday.
And PacCell? I know they have not met, and will meet in the fall. Passios Building Design Committee?
Yes. So we met on May twenty-sixth. This was our first meeting after the town meeting. So we started off by talking about the town meeting. We talked about how the presentation also is under the, the town website, so people can, can see that as well. The committees had a sense that the general attitude was non-contemptious, and it was actually a pleasure to be at the meeting. The, there was an amount of about fifty-four thousand dollars. We went through that a little bit and explained how that's really going to be used as a data point to see what a new build would, would look like. Because of the, the cost was so high for a renovation, the committee felt like it was important for the, the town citizens to know what the cost would be for a new build, to use that as a, a data point. So now we're going to be going through that process of getting that data point for the town so they can make that decision on what to go forward with. There was an update with the architect that one of the, one of our lead contacts, Tom Lamb, is, is leaving the architect firm. So the other contact that we've had, Ed, Ed DeSalvo, is going to be our, our new head contact, our main contact. And then our next meeting is June sixteenth at five thirty.
All right. Thank you very much. Now on to topics for future discussion. Does anyone have a topic that they feel we need to talk about? When we meet next time, in person, when we meet next time, should we map out the meetings for the next year? That would be something that we need to address. And I will be contacting Mr. Kelly, and we'll make sure that we can do any reorganization at that time that we need to do. So I don't know if anybody had anything else. Ms. Kelly?
Could we also, I know there have been discussions in the past of keeping some of our meetings via Zoom in order for the public to join. Maybe we could discuss that a little bit more in detail?
At this time, the governor has actually extended the, the change to the open meeting law through September first to allow them time to possibly make some permanent changes to the open meeting law that would allow for this sort of virtual meeting or virtual meeting attendance, et cetera. So I think it's, at this point, it's a, a work in progress as to how they might change, change the law and what might be allowable for us. But, you know, for, for myself, I will say that you know, it's, it's nice to have the attendance when we have these virtual meetings. It's great for my administrative, administrative team to be able to attend virtually from home and not have to go home at the end of the school day to return to the building for seven o'clock meeting or to stay for hours to be able to be present for a seven o'clock meeting. And even just the general community and parents, I think we've seen a much better attendance through this medium. So I, I am anxious to see what they might do in terms of a permanent change to the open meeting law and what, what might be allowable for us, you know, beyond September first.
So at our next meeting, when we plan out our meetings for next year, we can talk about what we're going to do over the summer. And maybe one of those topics would be, how are we going to incorporate, incorporate some form of virtual participation?
Like, like Dr. Burnham said, and even I heard at the, the select board meeting, that we're still kind of waiting to hear what, what the, the legislation actually decides.
Right. Okay. So anything else?
I would just ask that people come prepared at the next meeting being, being aware of availability during the summer months of July and August so that we can make sure that we, we set meeting dates that will definitely get us a quorum first, but dates that would, would get us full, full members in attendance. And we can, we can plan from there. I know that we did have meetings through the summer months last year, but that was a very unique year in terms of all the decisions that needed to be made and spending relative to all the changes. So the year prior, and again, it was based largely on availability of all of the members. It was near impossible to find a date. We could not find a date in July where we would have everyone in attendance. And you know, it, we ended up pushing into mid, late August to have the workshop meeting that was scheduled that year. We can also discuss at the next meeting, you know, do we want to do some type of workshop meeting this summer? But I, I think, you know, the experience of going through a, a summer where there were no, no meetings until mid-August, it, it turned out to be, be fine because folks were able to come in, sign warrants, and that was like the most critical business to continue through those summer months. And now with an electronic signature platform for warrants, with the exception of the chair having to come in and provide the physical signature, everyone else could, could sign off on warrants electronically from anywhere all summer without having to come in to the office to sign. So things to consider. And, and again, we can, if everybody comes knowing their availability for the summer months, we should be able to make decisions about when and how frequently we want to be able to meet and how we want to use the meeting time if there's something specific that, that everyone would like to do.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other thoughts? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Kelly?
This is Laura Kelly, and I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine oh seven PM.
Mr. Leighton?
I'll second that motion.
All right.
Ready for roll call?
Sure thing.
Ms. Shapiro?
Yes.
Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.